January 14, 2014 School Committee Meeting. We're pleased to have East Hampton Public Access Cable recording the meeting for us this evening. And we'd like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. And wanted to mention that the East Hampton Public Access Cable Station, which is Channels 5, 19, and 20, is always looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy at 413-203-1360. Before we move into the agenda for tonight's meeting, I just wanted to take a moment to thank two former school committee members for their service over the years. Our last meeting of the year in 2014 was canceled unfortunately due to weather conditions. And as a result, we didn't have the opportunity to thank Ladonna Crow for her six years of service, and we didn't have the opportunity to thank and say goodbye to Nancy Sykes for her two terms on the school committee, her four years of service. And I just wanted to take this moment to publicly thank them for their wonderful contributions over the years, their time dedication service has really been appreciated. And we thank them for that, and we wish them well. And we'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome our two new members to the school committee, Daniel Carey and Wendy Blumenthal. We're really pleased to have you onboard, and we look forward to a very successful two years ahead.
And our new mayor.
And our new mayor. How could I forget? Mayor Karen Kager. Thank you for being with us. So, we're grateful for our new members. And with that, we'll begin the program outlined on the agenda.
My announcements.
So Superintendent Fowles, you will start us off with announcements.
Thank you, Deb. The next school committee meetings are January 28 and February 11, 2014. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council will meet from 7 to 9 p.m. in the second floor conference room here at 50 Payson Avenue on the following dates: February 12, March 12, April 9, May 14, and June 11.
Okay, and we have some correspondence. And Laura, our new secretary, will tell us about that.
We have, should be, is that gifts or just, we'll start with correspondence?
Yeah.
So there was a letter from the NEASC addressed to Dr. Perone outlining that they are having a meet, that the committee when it met on October 27th and 28th of 2013 reviewed the pre-self-study report of East Hampton High School and continued the school's accreditation. The committee was pleased to commend the following: the process used to review the current core values, beliefs, and learning expectations, which included input from faculty students, the student council, and the school council; the inclusive process used by faculty to identify specific indicators on which the school needs to take action in preparation for the 2016 decennial evaluation, including developing school-wide rubrics, providing sufficient resources for curriculum implementation, using common formative assessments, creating a data team, providing resources for professional development, and creating a strategic long-range plan; the thoroughness of the pre-self-study demonstrating the professional staff's commitment to the accreditation process. So, in preparation for the 2016 visit, the school should align the curriculum to the school's 21st century learning expectations, and have in place a process to assess the progress of all students in the aggregate and individually in achieving these expectations using school-wide rubrics. The school should also be able to demonstrate that it uses the school's core values, beliefs about learning, and 21st century learning expectations to guide decision-making related to such things as curriculum instruction, professional development assessment, and the provision of services.
And who is this second correspondence addressed to, just as dear friend?
The school committee.
Just the committee in general?
Committee.
Okay, so addressed to the school committee in general from November 20 of 2013. The St. Patrick's Committee of Holyoke is inviting us to participate in the 63rd Annual Parade to be held on Sunday, March 23, 2014, in the city of Holyoke. And the deadline for return is January 18, 2014. So we'd need to, if we're intending to participate, we're going to review the regulations and sign a return of parade participation agreement.
Lastly, to Dr. Perone, the principal at the high school, from David Sullivan, who's our district attorney. He is writing to thank him for sending a team to the Second Annual Youth Conference on Substance Abuse Prevention, which was held at GCC on October 16 of 2013. The conference was designed to teach students about healthy brain development and being an active bystander. Three fun and interactive workshops were presented, which provided the teams with the tools to be the influence at their schools and communities and keep those efforts thriving. The conference was a great success with nine public school teams attending. He says that our team did an exceptional job. Our student leaders were engaged and creative in approaching this problem, were a great credit to our school. And he has enclosed a photo of all the students who participated, and thanks us for our commitment to addressing the serious problem of substance abuse. And that is the last bit of correspondence.
And would you like to share with us the gifts?
We have the following gifts.
Andrew, that is a motion?
I move, yeah, I move to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts: from Mr. Clay Crow and Mantis Graphics for the donation of new East Hampton High School road signs; Mr. Scott Callahan for the donation of supplies, time, and manpower to install the new center school sign; Dalton LaValley Post 224 American Legion for the donation of $500 to the East Hampton High School band; and the following donations to the East Hampton High School Student Renaissance: $250 from Samantha Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts; $250 Florence Savings Bank; $250 from the Council on Aging of East Hampton; $250 from East Hampton Police Association; $100 from Dalton LaValley Post 224 American Legion; $50 from Dr. Shelley Wilton of Wellness Within Chiropractic; $50 from Think in Paris; and $25 from Shelburne Falls Coffee Roasters. We also have the Rotary Club of East Hampton for donating $250 to the East Hampton High School We the People; and Mary J. Harding for the donation of $50 to the East Hampton High School We the People; and lastly, the Williston Northampton School for the donation of $500 towards thumb drives for students in the Gifted and Talented Program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, at this time on the agenda, we have public speak. If anyone would like to come to the podium here and speak about something not on the agenda, you are welcome to do so. And we just ask that you identify yourself and where you live, and limit comments to one or two minutes. So if anyone would be interested to speak on something not on the agenda, you can come forward at this time. Okay, I guess not. Next, we'll move to subcommittee reports, the finance subcommittee. Do you have a report?
In your package is the minutes from our last meeting on December 3. We just talked about the fiscal year 2015 budget and how that was going about. And then the other thing is, we did ask to get an update on the Chartwells. So, I don't think we have that yet, tonight.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. And the policy review subcommittee?
I had actually attended that one, and now the other members of that policy subcommittee aren't here. So, what the subcommittee was charged with on this particular meeting was to look at the transportation policy, to make sure it's as accommodating as possible. And during that meeting, the policy subcommittee felt that, at that point, it was as accommodating as possible. So that's what they had discussed at that meeting. And the minutes are in your package.
Okay. Wendy, you attended a CES meeting. Wendy Blumenthal is our new CES representative. Would you like to provide us with an update?
I went to my first meeting last week. It was a great group of people. I'm looking forward to getting to a better understanding of how our district collaborates with the collaborative. And the collaborative is in the midst of a great change right now with a new executive director being hired. So that's really, seems to be the focus of what's happening right now. There's, they've narrowed it down to, I think, four candidates, and there'll be a group interview towards the end of the month. And I'm not recalling that date right off the top of my head. And it seemed like the second big issue of the evening was that forthcoming will be a new state, like, it's not a charter or guidelines, I'm forgetting the terminology they use, but that the collaborative has had to adopt in conjunction with DESI. And that'll be coming forward to all the participating school districts, which must unanimously vote to accept it. So, that'll come to the attention of Superintendent Fowles, me, and yourself as chair, and then we'll get to take a look at that packet. It's very fun reading. I got a sneak peek at it, and we'll vote on it.
Very good. And then you have any questions? Okay, normally we would move to the student activities update from Jordan Burt, but she's unable to be with us this evening. So, I think that'll bring us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. We, in talking with Deb this morning, we changed the order a little bit. We're going to start with the update on food service. So Andrew, could you come and give us that, please?
Good evening. For those who I haven't met before, my name's Andrew Stratton, and the food service director with Chartwell School Dining Services. I also am the director for Granby Public Schools as well. Just a general overview on how the first half of the year has gone. Go quickly over some highlights on some promotions, and then I'll go over some of the financial details. Each year, we try to highlight local produce, regionally grown produce that we purchase and the students eat during the school year. During September and October, we highlighted the Massachusetts Farmer's School Program. And on each level, high school, middle school, elementary school, we had different local vegetables highlighted. And we're still doing that in January. The harvest of the month with Massachusetts is winter squashes. So, a number of times during the month, we've highlighted, at the elementary school, cinnamon butternut squash. At the high school and middle school, we've brought in a couple other, Hubbard and other things, and trying to give a sample of different products that the students are open to. We work with the Franklin County Co-op where they actually take local produce during the fall, flash-freeze it, and then we receive it during the winter months. So we're going to be receiving some local carrots that we'll be able to serve during the January and February, keeping money flowing to the local community. Students have a good response to it. We'll also have broccoli and peppers that have been flash-frozen, and we're able to utilize that during the winter months. We highlighted some of these things, as well as just a general overlook on the program at Parents' Houses this past fall. I have some handouts, if you're interested. I know a couple people I saw at the, if you want to look at them and pass them out. I have more. And we handed them out to parents at the schools. Give a general overview on the prices, what the program entails, what our goals are, trying to bring the freshest, healthiest foods, and operating the program based on the USDA regulations. It was a nice interaction. A lot of parents that, you know, have heard this and that from their students were able to ask questions. We had a number of different samples, a black bean and corn salad that the parents and the students liked. We had our whole grain crust pizza that we gave samples. So it was a nice, the principals were happy, the parents were happy. So it was a nice interaction. A lot of times, trying to get a couple hundred kids through the serving line at any of the schools can be somewhat hectic, but it was nice for our, a couple of our associates came and helped out, and they were able to interact. And a lot of times, when you're working in a uniform or something, when you see, or even faculty will see their students outside of school, and it's like, hey, you're a normal person, you know, in sort of a light atmosphere. So that was nice. A lot of questions were answered on free reduced and nutrition and other things. So it was, we're hoping to do it at all the open houses, especially in the fall.
I just have to say, I sampled all of those things, and they were wonderful.
Oh, good, good. And a lot of times, I mean, it's hard, you know, putting a good face on school lunch. A lot of times, there's always the mystery meat or other things. So it's nice to have parents come, see the cafeterias, especially the new one at the high school, and interact and see some of the foods. So it was a good experience. This is a financial overview of November's numbers, along with September and October. I'll briefly go over it. I also have information as far as December. I wasn't able to put it into a financial worksheet yet. Our participation highlights, based on what our plan or our budget is, the different types of meals, à la carte sales and that type of thing on the first page. Based on our, this year versus last year and the year before, we've actually crept up in FY12, we were, for the district, we're about 63 percent, 63.4. So, well over half of the students were participating on a daily basis in the program. FY13 dipped slightly to, that's not on this paper, to 62 percent. And then this year, we've gone way up to around 70 percent. A lot of that has to do with à la carte, the change in the à la carte rules with the state, especially on beverages where we could offer, you know, no calorie drinks, sports drinks, and vitamin water. We can't offer that anymore. It's either plain water, eight ounce low-fat milk, or four ounce juices. So we went from about $374 in à la carte sales daily to about $300 in sales. So that was a little, but more kids are buying lunch, so that's a good thing. Page two, and you can either hold questions, or if you have a question, please let me know. Food costs, we've been able to keep that fairly close to last year. And based on the amount of meals we've sold, it's more or less in line with that. Paper is about the same as well. The, there's year-to-date, there's the November numbers, and then a forecast of the end-of-the-year cost, and then prior year. So we are higher than last year, but a number of things have increased: food costs, labor costs, health insurance, those things. One of the costs that has, we were able to locate, the school district had a food service truck that we used to bring food to the different schools, and that was at the end of its lifespan. So we were able to get a van, and we're purchasing that, and the cost of the fuel and everything out of the school lunch budget. So roughly, right now, about $3,600 in the budget has gone towards that. So that's an additional cost that we hadn't thought of before the school year, and that's would be under the semi-variables. So that's increasing our costs somewhat. On the next page, page three, goes over our revenue. We have dropped somewhat in, not a huge amount, but based from last year, enrollment of students that come to lunch or breakfast is about 24 students. And average that over, you know, the full school year, there is a somewhat decrease in parts, or in revenue, drop in revenue of student à la carte. So the revenue is somewhat behind what we were hoping for. We're going to be pursuing some other promotions during February, and especially March, which is National Nutrition Month, so we're hoping to spur sales there. We're contemplating, there's an added cost to it, but we have basic decent deli meats, but we might, we're contemplating going with a boar's head, which is fairly more expensive. But the high school and the middle school, we do offer a lot of deli sandwiches that might increase participation there. So we're trying to iron out what can increase our revenue. So on the bottom of the chart before the graphs, it goes over the loss. Year-to-date is 15,000, which is pretty much very similar to what we incurred at the beginning or after the first four months last year. And we ended the year last year negative 6,000 or so. This is projecting a negative balance of 9,700, and we're hoping to get lower. We're always aiming for a breakeven, but depending on cost and everything else, we're hoping it's lower than 9,000, but that's what we're projecting right now. So, if there's any questions, please?
I have a question. Have you, do you make it a practice ever to hand out surveys at all to the families?
Yes, usually yearly. We haven't done, we're probably waiting till beginning of February to do a survey at all grade levels, as well as, it'll be open to parents as well. It'll be online, and there'll be, I think there's about 30 questions that can be answered on, and that does help us shape somewhat on the menu.
Is it asking them what they'd like to see introduced newly?
Yes, all the above. We try to, you know, the students and the parents are customers, and we're trying to provide them, along with going with the regulations, you know, what they'd like. We try to balance the menu with what the students like, and what, you know, is healthy for them, and a variety. So we try to mix it up, but we do use that. I do try to meet with student groups at the schools to get their input as far as what's going right, what they like. I try to do occasionally, depending on time, samples. I underline the staff do say there's new vegetable, or we have to offer legumes, bean dishes each week. We try to make some, you know, no thank you helpings and cups given to the students so they can try them.
And Nancy, if you don't mind, I had spoken with you about this subject, so I'm wondering if I could ask Andrew, just so that we get it public. So, I had a person ask me, and I think it's more, so if a student has, I guess, a specific diet, for example gluten-free, can you help them, or should people talk to you if they have issues?
Based on the cost for the districts, the policy is that we could see their school nurse with any doctor-mandated issues. We work with the nurses on carbohydrate counts for some diabetic students, and we are, at Whitebrook, we do have gluten-free options. Currently, only one parent and student has come to us with that. They have a doctor's note that, and go through the nurse. The nurse and I work with them, see what the child's likes, dislikes are. We're able to actually purchase a gluten-free pizza dough that we'll make on certain days. A lot of our, we try to mirror, if there is, you know, a student with a special diet like that, we try to mirror the menu that we have. So each week even, we'll change it so they're having pizza when the other kids are having pizza, or if they're having a, you know, a taco salad or tacos, the whole grain tortillas are gluten-free, so we have those on the same day. So they feel like they're getting lunch like everybody else. So if there are any concerns, they can contact my office at Whitebrook. Usually, my email and the phone number is on the menu. It's also on our website, or if they have questions, they can contact their school nurse. So, okay.
And we have plans in place, I think him presenting, I didn't see the elementary school open house, but I think that would be a wonderful way, as somebody who just habitually packs my kids lunch, I think it would
Yeah.
break down that wall, and to introduce the idea of little taste testing, and to meet the person, to humanize.
Yeah, and that's what we found when we did, I wasn't able to be at Maple, we had an open house in Granby on the same day, but at the Center Pepin Open House, I didn't obviously see everybody, but it was a good interaction. We even had, not that we have it on the menu, but we had infused water with orange, and students understood, we had a lot of handouts towards thinking what you're drinking. So you don't have to have soda or something else, you can have, you know, something that, and the students and the parents actually liked it, and a lot of them grabbed the recipes, they grabbed recipes for the black bean and corn salad, and so it was a healthy, nice atmosphere. So the more we do that, the more we interact with the students and the parents, they do get a better sense of the program and what we're about.
So, another question?
One more. So are the schools using you for extracurricular events? Are they, I know you've talked in the past, like, even if they're going on a field trip, they could do lunch, are they doing things like that?
Yes, yeah, we've been interacting over the last two years with the principals. If there's field trips, students are able to sign up for bag lunches, and we'll have, you know, ham and cheese or turkey grinder with baked chips and apple, and we have coolers that go with them with milk, and it's a reimbursable lunch. So, a lot of times, it'll come right off of their POS, sorry, point of sale, their student count. If they're free reduced, it's easily done that way without anybody knowing about it. We've offered pizza parties, we do do catering. The guidance department, in October, they had a, I guess, region-wide college night at the high school. They asked us to submit a bid for, with restaurants, and we won the bid and put on a nice dinner, buffet dinner with all my background's restaurants and college food service, so that helps in doing those things. So we are available for those things. And we do try to keep it, especially for in-house things, fairly close to budget, or, you know, close to cost, but we have to cover all the school district's costs. That's first and foremost. And it goes over very well. And it puts us in a different light with the guidance, or with teachers that come to it and say, hey, wow, you know, it's not just chicken nuggets and stuff. So that's good as well.
Any other questions? Well, Andrew, I was thinking that maybe you could speak a little bit about Winterfest and the chili contest.
Yes. I haven't responded yet, but I spoke into the, one of the representatives of the festival as far as utilizing the kitchens at the high school and things like that, and they brought up a chili contest, and the board of health had said they needed a, somebody with surf safety and sanitation to oversee it, so the restaurants, chilies. So I volunteered to do that, and also offered that the food service department would also put in a chili recipe into the contest. So hopefully, we'll, again, similar atmosphere, you know, hopefully some of the students will try it next to one of the restaurants and say, hey, you know, the food's pretty will try it next to one of the restaurants and say, hey, you know, the food's pretty good.
And weren't you talking about maybe doing some samples for students before chili?
Yes, I'm hoping over the next, before February, to have some samples at the high school, have a little thing saying, you know, pick your favorite Winterfest chili. We'll do a couple, maybe one with black beans and corn, one with no beans or thing, and they can, you know, vote for which one they want to represent the schools.
Yeah, I think it'll be lots of fun, and Andrew does a great job. The food's wonderful, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted, if I may, to reemphasize my own view as a, as a member of the school committee, that while it's important for us to have a discussion about the costs related to this program, the food service program is part of the educational program. And I'm always, I always sort of pause for a moment when we talk about breaking even and whether we're, you know, profitable or operating at a loss, because I think that, you know, we could do the same kind of analysis, I suppose, with athletics, or we could do the same kind of analysis with any number of things that we do at the school. And I think we don't, and for good reason, they're part of the overall package. So this is not directly, I mean, the information is useful, but the takeaway, I wouldn't want someone to immediately see, we tend to think loss is bad. We could also think of this as just an investment in the children's education, in which case it's good, you know, because we know of the direct relationship between the nutritional program that they participate in and their ability to learn and grow. So I just wanted to remind folks of that perspective.
Good point, Peter, and I think that this is a good time too to remind people that before Chartwell's Food Service, we began to contract with Chartwell's Food Service, we had a substantial deficit. And with them in place, we've narrowed that deficit to almost nothing, so.
I thank you for that. And basically, we operate the program the way, well, the way you're asking us to. So I think we're on the right track. Obviously, we don't want to waste the money and get into a larger deficit, but the quality of the food and the program are the first, first thing we're aiming for. And if I could highlight, on the webpages, I've been trying to put more nutrition information, newsletters occasionally, there'll be another one coming out within the next month, just highlighting things for, for parents on nutrition information they can use at home. Also answering questions that they have. And there's even, I don't know if it's up there right now, whether I took it down or not, but there's also information for lesson plans and things like that that Chartwell's has through their dieticians that either at home or even in the classroom can be utilized for nutrition education.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Well, and since you bring that up, usually in the fall, or last fall, the fall before, I brought up, I would like either to invite the school committee, either to the high school or Whitebrook, look at the kitchens, have samples before a school committee meeting, or especially in the fall where we have more of the local produce, either bring, you know, a light snack here beforehand, or even in the spring, be nice to highlight part of, at the open houses, we did have a couple, they weren't seen very well, but a couple of the wraps and other things that parents could see what the lunches are, give you a better understanding of what the students are getting. So we'll arrange that at a different time.
That'd be great.
I am done, Andrew.
Yeah, I had lunch at the high school and it was very, very good. Thank you, Andrew. Andy, I think we'll have you come up and give the budget update now.
Well, the weather has put us a month behind, so I'll talk to the November 30th that was in your packet. Not much has changed in the month of December as far as where things are projected, so everything kind of is holding firm. We're running favorably as far as the budget and our projections go. There have been, the two areas primarily of concern right now are the way our substitute lines are trending for sub salaries, our use of subs, and in maintenance, primarily we have some boiler issues at, at Whitebrook. The boiler number two has to have sections replaced. Mr. Roy has gotten quotes to do so. We've been addressing it, sort of I say the Band-Aid approach from, for now, but it's gotten to the point where it's cost-effective to look at replacing parts of the boiler. So we have gotten quotes to do that. It's above and beyond a normal routine. Maintenance, we've explored from the issuance of this report to now, this Department of Energy Resources has a Sapphire grant program, which is for schools in low-income housing. The coordinator of that program told us that the nature of the work that we would be doing would not qualify us for this grant to help us offset the cost, because you would have to look at replacing the boiler with something more energy efficient. And this is, A, it's our second boiler, the backup boiler, and we're just talking repairs. So that grant program unfortunately would not work for this nature of the work. What this does mean, I need to give you sort of the notice that, you know, it is now, this was in November, it's December and January, where hopefully this will address the problems, but anything else that happens in any other building, we could potentially be looking at the need to go to city council for a reserve transfer of some sort for offsetting anything else that comes down the road. We're using the maintenance contracted service line that we have in our budget appropriately for what it's for, but if anything else happens, then we're, we're pretty stuck with having to address it and look at some other funding source that we don't have in our budget. Any other questions that I can take now?
Andy, did you, I was making myself a note, did you mention the estimated cost for the boiler replacement?
Thirty-six thousand dollars is what we're looking at.
It was an unanticipated expense, clearly. Any other questions for Andy? Okay. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the transportation update. And so I think Lori explained to you that the subcommittee reviewed the transportation policy as requested by the school committee to see if it was accommodating, as accommodating as we could make it. And the subcommittee determined that after careful review and discussion of the policy, that it was as accommodating as we could make it at this point in time, and they didn't feel that it was appropriate to make changes at this point in time. And Deb, I don't know if you wanted to have a further conversation about this. We, you know, we did have a request for a, an exception to the policy, and the school committee in November denied that request. And then, and then their response was to send the whole policy back, for review, back to the policy subcommittee. You do have information in your packet on the busing transportation in our district and the, the policy itself. And are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, if this is the appropriate time. So it was my understanding we were kicking this back, and I know things were really interrupted with the unforeseen break that we had in December due to weather, but I thought that we had left this as a twofold, you know, on one hand, the policy review, subcommittee would be going over it to tighten it up as much as we could at this point. And secondly, that we were going to reevaluate whether or not we would be moving forward with any additional requests for exceptions in addition to Ms. Trent Holm, who I see as here tonight. So I don't know if this would be the point where we open that up again, because I don't see anyone in addition to her, but she is here, and I, and it was my understanding that this was the point where we were going to discuss that further.
So thank you for that, Laura. What, the other piece that I did not add to this report was that I was asked to go back and find any other parents who had issued requests to, to have the, an exception made, had gone forward, wanted to go forward with that. So when I went back to Carol Robillard, the busing coordinator, she gave me all the information that's in your packet. So except for Ms. Trent Holm, we've had a number of parents inquire about the policy and inquire about getting transportation for their children. But when Ms. Robillard or I explained the policy to them, they did not choose to go further than that. So that's why I didn't bring any other names forward. I just gave you some kind of background information on, you know, what, the kinds of requests that we had gotten over time. But none of those requests, and normally when, well, not normally, every time, anyone comes to me with a request, I explain the policy. If they still have questions about it, you know, I tell them that, you know, they certainly can come to the school committee, pursue that with their request. But we haven't had anyone do that in my tenure as superintendent.
It is my understanding though that we are going to continue to have the policy committee consider ways, this is, this is, this is something that is part of an ongoing review of making it as clear as possible to people in the community how the bus program operates, because it clearly is something where there's visual appearance that can raise questions in people's minds. And we had talked about posting some frequently asked questions about the bus policy on the website, so that it would help, you know, clarify, educate, inform parents and families in the community about why, what they might witness as being apart from our policy is actually consistent with our policy. And it's just a matter of clarifying how things come to look a certain way to someone who's out and about, who observes buses, bus stops and things like that. So that, that's still part of the policy committee's sort of brief, if you will, going forward, is to consider ways to answer, to look at those questions that came through in some of this correspondence and to provide answers to folks, so that it's clear to everyone involved why the decisions are made the way they are about how the buses operate.
I wonder if we could also have the policy subcommittee start over with the policy review. Through, you know, we got the report back from a subcommittee that has changed membership, and it just said, to me, it's fine.
Yeah.
And if it was fine, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I have a question about section 15, the Transportation Review Committee, does that exist? And are we utilizing it? And then also in reviewing if the policy, where the policy can be improved, I'd suggest we could look specifically at these questions of appeals and exceptions and put some verbiage into the policy about, you know, when are these exceptions made? What is the appeals process? You get a hearing, is how it stands now. Maybe we could add a little more detail to that and make it a little clearer what the community's supposed to do and what we're supposed to do.
And maybe I can just clarify, in all fairness to Nancy and Ladonna, that actually, that part did come up regarding the Transportation Committee, and it was the fact that they did not want to start changing things, knowing that they were about to get off this committee. So that was, at that point, they had said that it was accommodating, and then they just felt they'll just leave it to January 1st and the new policy subcommittee, so. And I agree, it should go back to the policy subcommittee, just to relook at that.
We're going to kick it back again for the new committee, too.
So would anyone be interested in making, I can't use that phrase. What is the proper phrase?
To just move, yeah.
I can't say that.
I know, it's fine.
She's correcting me grammatically. Make a motion, move to, would anyone like to move to?
I'll make a motion that the, the school committee endorse having the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, review the entire transportation policy to see if there are ways that we can clarify the procedures that are involved and to better serve the, you know, to see if there are any ways that we can better serve the school age population in the community than, than under the current policy. So both to clarify and to consider changes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion passed.
Can I ask, does that review committee exist?
I second it.
No, it doesn't, because, you know, in the policy, it does say that if there is a request that cannot be dealt with directly by the superintendent, as they pertain to already documented policies, I just, I haven't found a request that I haven't been able to deal with directly to date. So we have, I haven't called a committee for that reason. And I think that this, this section was put into the policy when the policy was first developed, because it was complex and difficult to understand, and I, and I think that there were a lot of questions about it, because we had to reduce busing at that point in time, the amount of busing that we provided for our students. So that's when the policy was developed. And so there were a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about it at that point in time, so I think that's why that was put in. But I haven't had to convene a committee, so I agree with you, I think this is a good section to look at.
Are we in that situation now? Well, it's under review, it's still the policy that we're sitting with. Is this?
I don't believe so.
We're beyond that because the appeals already been denied?
Right, that's right.
Could I just, so I think, so my understanding was when we left this, and it was, and the motion did, the last motion did not pass, it was my understanding that it was, the current mayor's had a very persuasive argument about, you know, the more equitable thing to do would be to invite whomever had made, had expressed this interest and followed the terms of the policies at that point, to all come at the same time and be considered equally. And so what we're left with is just the single person petitioning for this exception. And given that, I don't know if in the packets, her request in the mitigating circumstances thusly were already weighed out, so you're familiar with it, then knowing that, I would like to move that we make an exception for the remainder of this school year for the one family, Angelica Trent Holm and her daughter Casey, to ride that bus that stops in front of their house while we are reviewing this policy.
We have discussion?
Yeah. I was just going to say, is this a corporate, not for some discussion?
Yes.
So I completely concur, and I want to thank Dan for bringing forward that we revisit this again at a subcommittee level, because it's clearly very, very, very much needed. And I guess I'm just, I'm not trying to be naive about this at all. I think first and foremost, we have an obligation as a school committee to talk, to think about financial impacts on the district. And Nancy, you have 100% of my support as a parent and as a school committee member to continue to do that. But I also think we have a very parallel obligation to help ease any burden we can. And if there's, if there's, I'm not talking about an additional bus. I'm talking about saying yes when there's no reason not to, if there's not an additional increased cost to the district. If there is, I've read Ms. Robillard's report, talking about the increase of a bus, if there were a substantial amount of people here requesting an appeals process, that would bring to light different considerations for me. But I think the way the policy currently is written is individual or family, A, in this case, Ms. Trent Holm, they've requested a hearing, that's essentially, I mean, I have yet to hear as, as either a parent in the audience prior to now or now in school committee, the actual language be used, but essentially, this mother and her daughter have come here multiple times now, and I think at some point we need to honor that, or just put on the table, is this an official hearing? Because they've persistently come forth and they deserve, according to our policy, whether we agree with it or not going forward, there's a hearing process. And I think we just need to respect and appreciate that language and honor them. And either they're entering a hearing now or at the next meeting, or we've said this is a hearing and we get a yes, no vote. But to have them keep coming back and forth for us to keep jockeying this back and forth between meetings, and doesn't seem fair to me.
Well, I think that, you know, what I've said to the committee before is that, you know, I feel very comfortable in bringing this back to the subcommittee again, and having them explore all the implications of, you know, accepting. and having them explore all the implement, implications of, um, you know, accepting, or making a, an exception to our policy. Um, I think there are a lot of factors that would need to be really explored carefully by the subcommittee, and then brought back to the committee before a decision to make an exception were made. Um, you know, in talking with our school's attorney, um, today, you know, he, and I, and I asked him about our whole process, and he said, well, you know, kind of what I had said before is that once we grant an exception, if we grant an exception to one family, then every other family is going to come forward, uh, has the right to come forward. And, and once they know that the school committee has granted an exception, the chances are that many other families who are interested in this transportation will come forward as well, uh, which will, uh, then cause the school committee to have to make decisions about those exceptions. So once you've granted one exception, it'll be hard not to grant every other exception, because there could be a, a claim of discrimination. And I guess what I would wonder, and what I would ask the subcommittee to look into is, you know, how do you decide whether this one is eligible for an exception and this one isn't? The other complication we have in this particular request is that this family is a school choice family. So our current policy says that we will, um, consider, uh, granting, uh, transportation exceptions to East Hampton residents. So we have several complications to this particular instance that we're talking about this evening, and that's why I think it would be, uh, advisable to have the, the subcommittee look at all of these exceptions, uh, and all of these, uh, aspects of the, um, of the policy, and really think carefully about what will happen if we start to grant exceptions, and do we want to grant exceptions? Um, the, the current exception has been denied. Policy subcommittee's task this time was just to see how accommodating our policy was. And Dan, I think you make a good point, we've got a new subcommittee, um, we've got new committee members. Um, I would frankly like to go through the process of having the new subcommittee look at the policy and, you know, any kind of implications that there might be, and maybe there are changes that need to be made before we start granting exceptions. Once we grant one exception, it will be very difficult for you as a committee to grant, uh, or to not grant any other exceptions that come forward to you this year. And I just have to say again, we've, we've had budget discussions, um, once we start down that road, we will, um, in all likelihood, have to find the funds to put in another bus, which, you know, from the literature, our, um, busing coordinator has given you could cost, or could add another forty-some thousand dollars to our budget. So before we go down that road, I would feel comfortable if we could have the subcommittee, uh, look at, um, every piece of, of this, uh, discussion that we're having this evening, before we make any decisions.
I, I understand completely, Nancy, and I, and I believe, I can see where you're coming from, and I believe that's the position that airs on the side of caution, and, and I respect that. I think that in, in tasking the, the policy subcommittee with, you know, examining this and trying to tease out, um, the weaknesses and try to figure out what the implications are, I, I believe that the truest test of that would be to grant an exception to a family who's clearly has, has a very strong interest in this, who's pursued this for, you know, several months now, that is at zero cost to the district. And I think the fact that she's a school choice student would speak even more strongly to making an exception in this case, especially given the mitigating circumstances of their address, being on the town line, on Line Street, so they are literally across the street from East Hampton, across the street from the bus stop, and a bus that operates at half capacity. Um, so I do think, you know, it would be in a conservative nature in saying, for the remainder of this school year, there's a big question with, you know, all the changes coming forward for the next school year, whether we could afford to provide that service again or not remains to be seen. Um, but I think it would be interesting, and I think if we do see a large number of families, if that were to happen, I think that would be a real education to us, that there is a, a serious flaw in the current policy, and it would better inform the policy subcommittee in really dismantling and, and restructuring the policy to better serve the district.
And I would just ask you to think also about the fact of granting, uh, an exception to a, a school choice family, and we love our school choice families, but once we grant an exception to one school choice family, then we will open it up to providing transportation to all school choice families, which, you know, according to the state law, is not something that public schools, um, are required to do. So what we're, what we're saying in granting this exception is that we would be granting an exception for a family who, you know, as much as we wish they were, are not residents of East Hampton, um, before we are allowing residents of East Hampton to have this same kind of, uh, access to, to our bus transportation. Karen, that's what I was saying.
I, I think the other thing that I think Nancy's doing a really good job of explaining is we have many calls, especially when the school year first starts, um, as to exceptions to the policy. And that's, again, as you explained, when we explain that there is a policy in place, and most people don't take it any further. The call might come to my office, you know, I send it up to, to Carol, and she handles it then, and people just don't pursue it. So we have many, many calls, I mean, it's, sometimes you can be flooded with calls on all different issues related to busing. And of course, you'd love to, you know, you'd, you'd love to give the opportunity to every child and every parent, and there, there are a wide variety. Sometimes if they, you know, are going to daycare before they, they go to school, sometimes it's to the grandparents. And all of the calls I had are East Hampton children. And so it makes it very difficult to, um, have said, this is the policy, explain it to people, and then they're, well, they're not happy about it, but they understand the policy and they accept the policy. And then at this point in time, um, you know, to change it. Is there something in the, in the policies, Nancy, that actually does let us, um, override it, make exceptions, that type of thing?
Yes.
And that's as a school committee?
That's right.
Right. So, um, I, I think our biggest fear is having, explaining the policy and people accepting it at that, and, um, and there's a lot. And now, the, the way most of us would look at it, especially in a September type of year, is a Pandora's box, you know? So I think that's probably the, the, the fear on this side. It's not about trying to provide transportation, but, um, you know, we have a lot of East Hampton children that would love busing, and obviously, I'm sure all the school choices would love it, too. And we've had to cut busing, as Nancy was also explaining, many times. I, I, you know, I know for a fact, when my children, there was periods of time where there wasn't busing at all. We've actually had overrides for those type of things. So, you know, it's a very, very, um, tough issue, and it's just a matter of, you know, if you do for one, you do for all. It's not that anybody doesn't want to accommodate anyone.
I think that's the, the basis of an exception, though, is that it's not necessarily for all. It's case by case. Is it, you know, is it a detriment to the district? Is it a, you know?
It is potentially a detriment to the district if we have to find the funds to, um, put in another bus. And I think it's also important to remember that the reason we have policies is so that we can treat everyone in our district equitably. It's to provide, you know, the policy, um, criteria, and we apply it equitably across the district, and, and that's what we've done. Um, it may, it may be hard for us, we may not like to do this, we would love to give transportation to every student, uh, in our district, and to every family, and to every family who has need, but, um, policies are developed, and this one was developed carefully, not that it shouldn't be reviewed, but they're developed so that they are applied equitably across the district to all families.
And it's my understanding, right, so this policy that we're going to say we should defer to includes an appeals process? So it, it would seem to me to be kind of disingenuous to say, we include this appeals process in our current transportation policy, but we will not, under any circumstance, consider an exception for fear that it's a Pandora's box.
Well, that should probably be reviewed by the policy.
Right. And it was, and it was sent back as it stands, and now it will be sent back again for review.
I think it was reviewed to see how accommodating it was. And I, and I do think that the, uh, exception, uh, piece of the policy needs to be reviewed.
Can someone point me to the exception?
It's on the, um...
Is it, are you talking about the appeals process?
It's the appeals process, yeah.
Appeals process.
And I think, I guess one of my questions in the time...
The word exception's not in here at all, so I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something.
So, if, there is no exception, there would be no opportunity to appeal, I would assume.
Right, we're, you're in, uh, section fifteen, correct?
We're in seventeen.
Seventeen, I apologize, I'm jumping back between different documents and trying to come back to it. So, Nancy, am I understanding that you're endorsing the consideration by the, the policy subcommittee, and for consideration for the full school committee, that we look at the possibl, I, I'm trying to imagine, I don't know the geography of the town well enough to say this with certainty, but I imagine that there might be other families, such as the family that's brought this appeal to us, who would fall, um, within, uh, it would be a, a school choice family. I think part of the challenge here is, um, does it make sense for us from a policy perspective to begin to consider busing school choice students, who invariably are going to be more likely to be outside whatever boundary we set in East Hampton, because they're coming from other towns? And that that would be one of the considerations, because there might be an economic argument to be made, just as the fill-the-bus has an economic argument within East Hampton, that there might be an argument to be made, in effect, to sort of extend fill-the-bus, to capture, um, school choice students who are, who are relatively close. There, it sort of works in reverse, because it probably would only be economically feasible to grab school choice families, such as the family that's made this appeal. Someone who's ten miles away, we're not, probably going to find that it's economically feasible to run a bus all the way out, you know, to, to the hill towns to bring a student who's choosing to come to East Hampton in. But we can consider that as part of the policy.
And so Peter, I think that you're identifying some of the, some of the complexities that are involved in this transportation policy, and making any kind of, uh, exceptions to it. Um, you know, all of that, all of the exceptions to this policy, and I'm just talking about exceptions to the policy, have implications, have financial implications. Um, the, uh, busing routes that have to be developed, uh, that have to be developed in such a way for timing, because the buses are used for the elementary, the middle, and the high school. And so, um, that's one of the reasons that the bus stops are sometimes within that two-mile parameter, because it's all about getting the, uh, students that we have to pick up, and getting everybody that we have to pick up, and getting them back to school in ti, or to the school in time, for that bus to go out and make the next run for the next school. It's a very complicated and complex, um, matter that, um, Carol Robillard, as busing coordinator, um, goes through, along with Dave Strong, our, um, our contractor for the bus, in, in order to determine what the bus routes are, and, and where the stops are, and, and getting everybody to school on time. So, uh, and again, and we try to do this, um, with the fewest number of buses possible, um, because of the financial impact of having to add more buses. What the bus costs us this year is going to cost us more next year. So it's a very complicated, um, process to figure out, um, how we bus the students, the routes that they take, and, um, and the financial impact. So that's why I think that, you know, it's really important for the subcommittee to look, to get, and, and also because you are new committee members. So here you are, new committee members, without a deep understanding of, of this whole busing process. So I think that the subcommittee, uh, and I think we have some new members on our subcommittee, policy subcommittee?
All new.
Perfect. So that would be a great opportunity for all of those, um, subcommittee members to get a deeper understanding of the busing policy and how it operates before starting to make exceptions to it, that could have financial implications for our district. As much as I say we would love to be able to do it, I, I worry about the financial implications to the district, and they really are very real. And, and also the issue of busing choice students or not busing choice students. And I think we need to look at that, think about it, think about the implications. So they're, they're two, you know, big, uh, areas that need to really be thoroughly investigated before we make any moves that may, um, cause an additional expense to the district, which we can't afford at this point.
Totally, totally respect what you're saying, Nancy, but I'm going to go back again to say that this, this single exception has no financial impact whatsoever on the district, and it would, what was put on the floor was a motion for this to be for this school year. It would not, under any circumstance, have any impact on the district's budget. And if, you know, after, I think this is extraordinarily complex, and the subcommittee should take as much time as it needs to really fully review before we were to make any sort of other exception that may or may not come forward, that would have any sort of impact on the district's budget.
And so I guess I would say again, if I could just say this, that again, I would ask the subcommittee, Laura, because I think you're right, this particular one does not have, I do not believe has a financial impact, all of that.
Wait, I thought that, but that was the clarifying question that I wanted to ask, is that I maybe have misread, and I apologize, because I had to leave that previous meeting, it was not at the subcommittee meeting in December, I had to leave that meeting early, but when I read, we are not able to reduce the mileage at the White Brook this year because bus route 201, and that, isn't that the relevant?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Bus route. Has forty-two assigned students, reducing the mileage one-tenth would make nine more students eligible, increasing the number of students to fifty-one, which is over the capacity of the bus.
This isn't about reducing the mileage, though.
No, but it would be, because this particular family is at that mileage. So if you read...
So that was my confusion, was I thought that this family was at that mileage.
The nine-tenths.
So there's, there's sort of two things. There's, pretend that they're in East Hampton, and just look at it as a mileage reduction to capture them.
To, to make an exception for one family, which is a mileage reduction.
Would, would put nine more on. Did I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct, that's correct.
Have I misread that? Because that's what I, that's what I thought, because I was, I was one of the people who supported the discussion, Laura, in, in the portion of the meeting that I was able to attend at the time, and then I thought this information made it clear to me that it would, while I'm sad to say it, looking at this, I thought that it did have a financial implication, but maybe I've misunderstood this.
Potentially, and that's what I keep saying, it potentially does, because once we allow this family to take the bus, then all those other families who are neighbors of this particular family will also say, well, then I have the right to take the bus as well. That's, according to Carol Robillard, nine more families, which would increase the number on the bus to fifty-one, which is too high, and over the capacity of one bus, therefore it is not possible to reduce the mileage at the middle school, because we're going to have to add nine more students, and then, uh, we cannot fit those students on that bus, on, on the fill-the-bus policy, which is also in place, and we would have to put in another bus.
I agree that it doesn't, I, I don't think anybody has brought forth right now, or is bringing forth right now, a, a motion or a request for a discussion even to reduce mileage. This is, really, to me, it seems pretty clear that this is about one family's appeal process.
But what you have to understand is that this family is, is in lower mileage. So once we've reduced the mileage for this family, according to our policy, we have to reduce the mileage for all the other families.
No, 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 we're not, there was no motion to reduce the mileage, there was a motion to make a one-time exception for the remainder of this school year.
You have an appeal process and a, a question of whether or not you make an exception, there's not a discussion about reduction in mileage across the board.
No, what I'm saying is that this, this particular family is at that reduced mileage.
Yeah, I think it becomes...
But I don't, I don't think one equals the other.
But you see, for me, and this is why I've...
I don't read that anywhere in here.
I apologize for interrupting you. My, my, my reading of this information, which is part of what we requested coming out of the last meeting, was that we would be almost under the, I assume, would be under a legal obligation to affirmatively approach nine families and say, we've adjusted a bus route, and your child's now eligible for it.
That's our money being at all.
But maybe I've missed, I mean, that, that's how I've read it, and that's how I've reached the conclusion, that until the policy is reviewed, as, as Dan has suggested, would be wise for the whole thing to be looked at. I, I, I did support pursuing this before, I don't now, based on this piece, which I, again, I wasn't...
Which piece are you referring to, Peter?
The piece where it talks about the...
From whom?
The, the, the distance requiring nine additional students become eligible to ride that bus. That if we make this, uh, if we make the bus route available for this family, we are making it available, in effect, for ten families.
That's correct. I think she's making a false inference from my reading of that, too. I think it's... I think it's-
Well, my suggestion then would be that we contact our schools, school department attorney and get his view on this.
About the implications of-
Didn't you say you had spoken to him, the attorney?
I spoke to him about making exceptions, and he said, once you make one exception, then you're going to have to approve every other exception, every other appeal that comes to you, because if you don't, you know, you're going to risk-
Discrimination.
Discrimination, being accused of discrimination. So, but that's a whole different issue. I'm thinking that, you know, we have a disagreement on, you know, what we see here in Carol Robillard's information, so, and about what it means if we reduce that mileage to-
That's exactly where I'm at. If Ms. Robillard's report here, if, now, I want to say it the right way. If I understand this report correctly, I feel like I have to say no. If I've either misunderstood it, or it's not, there's a better way of expressing this, then I might reconsider, on the grounds of what you've suggested, that we're talking about a unique family for which there's no parallel in the community and no financial cost. But I see this paragraph as saying something other than that. So I would ask, at the very least, that the committee postpone voting on your motion, Laura, only for purposes of clarify, I mean, at this point, I wouldn't want to vote one way or the other, for fear that I was wrong either way, because I don't understand what this means. I read it to mean one thing, and it sounds like you're suggesting that it could mean something else. I'm not, I'm not sure that either of us knows for certain, and as we've experienced, when we read through the letters, we've once before gone down this road where we made a decision, and somebody came out from the state with a little wheel and said, oh, no, 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 you go this way around the sidewalk, and suddenly, you know, we had to reverse a decision that we had made before on something that, that basic. I would urge us, with apologies to the family for therefore making them wait even longer for a final decision from us, to get clarification about this passage in the report from Ms. That would be my, my suggestion and my rationale. And I apologize for not having asked her for further clarification before, but I read it and said, unfortunately, as it's written, to me, it means I would have to say no right now.
The second layer to this was that the, the motion that's currently on the floor is, would be allowing her to ride at no cost to her. In her letter to us, she did offer to pay, which is my understanding, an option that we do afford to our East Hampton residents. I don't know if that might be a less litigious or risky option to offer her to-
Wouldn't we have to offer that same option to pay to all?
We do, don't we?
But I think, I keep coming back to this patch and saying there's nine other families.
Then you go to the mileage reduction piece, I think. So there are multiple layers.
So again, I don't think any of us have the same understanding of this, and that's why I think that what Peter's saying is prudent, is for us to not make decisions until we have all the information and we all agree on the information, have the same understanding of it.
And should we review carefully about a-
Yeah, because remember that I'm advocating that we review the policy, because it sounds like there's an economic-
I thought we were already doing that, yeah.
Potentially, you know, that, well, and, you know, I, I agree with what Ladonna and Nancy decided in December, and I was, as I said, I was unable to attend that, that meeting, but I respect their decision to say to the incoming school committee that we won't, as in effect lame duck members, initiate a change, in a sense, send the ball rolling in one direction or another, we're going to leave the ball right here and let us pick it up and move it. I still think that there might be an economic advantage down the road to revising the way we handle the policy. And this conversation, you've actually done a great deal of good for the school committee, even though we have yet to give you a clear answer, because I think we, these are the things that we need to sort out.
So are we all at the point where we're going to refer this back to the policy subcommittee? They will review it extensively, bring a recommendation back to us, full committee, and we'll take it from there.
And we're scheduled to meet again in two weeks.
Correct.
Right?
So that would be my question, I mean, how soon? This is a huge undertaking to, as a new member of the policy subcommittee, this isn't going to be done in two weeks. So I just would want a timeframe as to, and I don't even know if I want a time, I mean, it can't, you can't tell me it's going to be done in two weeks.
And we're still waiting for a second, too.
Perhaps you could have the policy subcommittee, if they can arrange a meeting between now and the next meeting, report out at the next meeting their progress, and then at that point, we could determine a final date for decision. I don't know if that makes sense.
I think, at the very least, I think it would be, my request to the superintendent, actually, is that, that this bullet point with Ms. Robillard's, within her report, that we get sort of a, a translation again, just to be sure, because I think Laura has one understanding of it, I have another, I'm not sure.
Could she be here for the next meeting?
Who's, who's right.
And have her speak to the-
Or maybe she could just make that presentation, she could make that presentation to the sub, policy subcommittee.
Right. Well, I think, well, then it's, you know, my preference would be she speaks to all of us, because it pertains to all of us. If we're all going to be handling the appeals process, we're all going to be hearing exceptions, I would think, I'd rather hear from the horse's mouth, to be honest.
Has anybody met with her since this whole ordeal?
I've never met her.
Oh.
I had the opportunity to speak with her today, and I asked her a bunch of questions about the state requirements and state regulations, and clarified a few points for myself on this today, and she was very helpful, and I came away with a clear understanding, I think, of what the state requires.
It's a very difficult job.
And I didn't speak on this one, but I did speak with her under the, on the most recent prior appeal that we had.
And as I say, we may-
I found that it was effective to learn a lot.
Nancy, do you think she'd be willing to come to a meeting?
She certainly would.
Because that would be great.
But I think that also, you know, Carol is carrying out policy.
That's right.
I think that I will also get back in touch with our school department attorney at clarification-
I think that's crucial.
From him on interpretation of pieces of this policy. And he could perhaps be here to speak about that as well.
Can I ask if anyone knows offhand, not talking about busing or specific families, the appeals process in the transportation policy, has it ever been utilized?
Peter said it had.
Well, the appeal process in that someone brought an appeal to the school committee and to the superintendent is the most recent one. But the transportation review committee that's there, that didn't meet, because that essentially came down to a dispute over, dispute's too strong a word, a difference of opinion about how you measure the distance from someone's home to which door at the school.
Peter, could I clarify with that, too? Because that was a very different kind of appeal. That was appeal, an appeal about, so we have the, the two-mile limit, that by law, we have to transport anyone beyond two miles. So that was a really factual question to the school committee. This particular family said that they, the way they measured the distance, it was two miles. We said, we, using the Versatrans software program that we use and the police department who went and measured, said that, no, you're within the two miles, barely within, but within the two miles. So then he appealed it, he appealed it first to us and to the school committee. School committee denied it, because all of the ways that we had of measuring that distance indicated that that family was within the two miles. So then he went beyond the school committee and appealed to the state, which, you know, a family can do. If, but the only kind of appeal that the state will take is about that two-mile limit. So the state, whenever they get that kind of appeal, they send somebody out with a wheel, and they actually measure it by hand, from the front door of the person's home to the front door of the school. Now, what we didn't realize at the time is that the measurement has to be from door to door. When we were measuring it, we were measuring it from in front of the house to in front of the school. But that's not the case, it's actually door to door.
Thirty-five one thousandth of a mile was the difference.
Right.
That was the distinction. And the system that we used was different than the system the state used by that thin a line. But that thin a line moved the student from being ineligible to being eligible. Prior to that, I don't know, Dan, of, I'm not recalling, a time in the last six years when there has been an appeal that hasn't been dealt directly with, dealt with directly by the superintendent to the, when I use the word satisfaction, I don't mean contentment necessarily, but to the, I would say, to the understanding of the family.
Acceptance.
Right, acceptance of the family, that the superintendent's direct dealing with it was the end of the story. This, there was only one family in the example that Nancy just outlined. Lori, do you recall any others?
And of course, that family, it was, there was nothing subjective about it, other than we had one way of measuring, they had another.
And that's my question, is we have no policy for exceptions. Using that word literally from the policy, we have an appeals process. And so the only time it's ever been used, per current, you know, recollection as we sit, was not in an exception, it was in an interpretation.
Right, it's an application of the law, of the policy.
So the, you know, looking at, when they, the subcommittee reviews this, it's got to be more than just a review, it's got to, there's going to need to be an exception in addition, if, if we're going to make exceptions. Right now, we may or may not have the power to make exceptions.
Right now, it's just the discretion of the committee.
We certainly have the authority, the question, I think, is whether or not it's worth the risk.
But can we, in making an exception, and maybe this is, if we're, you can ask the, the attorney we've got on hand, changing the policy.
Yeah.
Then I think that's to Peter's point about this paragraph with the nine families. You know, can we say there's an exception? I don't know that we can.
I think that's-
To one.
We could, what would the, what would the potential repercussions be?
But then it wouldn't be an exception, it'd be a change.
Right. Essentially, it would change the policy.
So, I agree with Peter in that it's, it's hard to go one way or the other when we don't-
Have enough information.
Have enough information.
I mean, clearly.
As much as we'd all like to say, just pick them up.
Right.
You know, pick everybody up.
That's good.
We would love to, but-
One statement for all the families who live the way that I do. There is a sidewalk that goes all the way to the school, and, you know, from two miles and under, the children are expected to take that sidewalk. It's not kept safe and clear during the weekends at all. So there really is no safe way for these children to get to school without parents driving.
I think that's probably the case in a number of places throughout the city, unfortunately.
Or no sidewalks.
Right, or no sidewalk at all, unfortunately. It's very sad to say. Well, are we all in agreement that this is going to go back, we've, we've passed a motion that this is going back to the subcommittee for review? We'll get Carol involved in that, we'll consult with our legal, yes, we did.
That first one, and now there's a motion on the floor waiting for a second, or that needs to be retracted?
Will that cover, will that motion cover Dan's questions?
What are we talking about? Peter's motion?
Reviewing the same policy, or, you know?
Peter can't make a motion, because there's already a motion on the floor.
Right, but I can make a subsidiary, see, I have my chi chi. I can make a subsidiary motion, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, to postpone definitely the, the motion that's-
On the floor.
On the floor.
Yes.
Or that's, I mean, maybe I just like, that's the one I found the quickest that fits with what we're trying to do.
We're Sue when you need her.
I'm sorry.
And it's debatable and amendable.
Or would you want to retract the motion and revisit it as appropriate?
I would prefer not to retract, I would prefer to leave it standing in the minutes so that we can address it again after the policy subcommittee has met.
Then I would propose that we postpone it definitely.
You'd have to vote on it.
We don't have to vote on it?
Yeah, then we do vote.
Well, that has to be seconded, and then we need to vote.
Right.
I second Peter's.
So Peter, you moved to postpone the motion?
Actually, I've, I've got a better one. It says that, it says, I'm sorry, it says that we can also refer your motion to the, so then we would have a second motion to the committee. We have one motion already to review the policy as a whole, and we can refer this to committee for purposes of exploring clarification of, of what Ms. Robillard's report has said and the, and the question that Superintendent Fosby and, and Mr. Carey have mentioned about being sure that we can make an exception without it being a change in the policy.
So they would be voting on that motion?
We would all vote. We all vote right now to refer it to the subcommittee, and they come back to us with action on both.
So they would be voting, the policy subcommittee would be voting on the motion you're referring to then?
No, 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 we vote on it right now to refer it to them.
But what happens to Laura's?
Then the policy subcommittee would vote on it, the three members, so. I like the first one better.
Okay, so let's, let's just postpone it. I, I, I move that we postpone Ms. Scott's, uh, motion, yes, to, to make an exception in this case, definitely, until we get clarification on this policy and hear from legal counsel.
Second.
Second. Could we amend that to include feedback from the policy subcommittee?
And feedback from the policy, yes.
As well?
Sure, yes.
Wait, have you got all that?
Who seconded?
I seconded.
You seconded his motion to postpone your motion.
To make it more complicated, I certainly did.
I'm so glad we hesitated.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it's not seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention.
You abstained from your second?
Yes, I did. I understand it, I don't agree with it.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I ask, so I still, so clarification as to when this policy subcommittee is supposed to have this done?
It's definitely, so there's no period of time.
There's no exact deadline.
Okay.
But we will try to meet before the next meeting.
Well, I just know, there's no way I can meet before the June, the twenty-eighth. I can't.
But I think that-
So I know it won't happen in the next two weeks for me. Okay, I just want to put that out there.
The second piece, we, we can get a report back from the superintendent at our next meeting about two things related to Laura's-
And maybe have Carol be here.
We can, we can get clarification on the meeting of the, of the bulleted section here, and we can get advice from the legal counsel about whether we can make an exception without it being, in effect, a change in the policy.
The only thing is, our motion just included the fact that it would provide an update and feedback from the policy subcommittee.
So would that's one step toward gathering all of those things?
There was no timeframe on it.
Right, but I mean, each of those three parts could come in serially, they don't have to come in together, right? We could get the, the attorney could call Nancy back by the end of this week, Ms. Robillard could get clarification next week, and then the subcommittee could let us know in February, whenever they next can, can meet.
Can I make a further motion? That we let, that we promise to be in contact with Angelica so that she's not required to attend, unless she chooses to attend every meeting from now to the end of the school year, of course, she's more than welcome, but I'd like to move that we will be updating her, because this is a suspended motion that directly impacts her, so that she wouldn't be compelled to be here for every meeting, just on the off chance this is the meeting where we address it again.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? I don't think we need a motion.
I think we could just say we do. Can we just make a promise, whatever we need to do?
You'll do that, right? Ms. Fosby?
You can ask the superintendent to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy, that'd be great.
She would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Let's turn home, thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention, because it clearly needs, needs attention.
And I think every single one of us would very much like to be as accommodating as we could possibly be and help you out, and we, I think we all feel that way sincerely. Unfortunately, we just have complex issues to make sure that we tend to.
I thank you for the learning process. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Okay, let's see here, we are at the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest. So, I, I believe that Sue Colby sent you the letter that I received from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and the letter stated that they have opened, are open now for districts to submit statements of interest. And they began accepting statements of interest on January tenth. They have, so, let me back up. So what I've done for the three years that I've been superintendent is put in a statement of interest for White Brook Middle School for repairs and renovations to the roof and windows and HVAC system and so forth. We have not been brought in to the eligibility criteria for any of those statements. When I did those statements, they had a list of priorities, and I just checked the priorities for the building. And it was the mayor's request, and the school committee agreed that we would do White Brook at that time, because we had, you know, the, the high school project. So now it appears that they have separated into two kinds of requests for a statement of interest. One is for the accelerated repair program, which is essentially, I think, what we have been doing for White Brook, which is primarily- been doing for Whitebrook, which is primarily repair or replacement of windows, roofs, and/or boilers. And the date for that statement of interest submission is February 14th. The other kind of statement of interest is for a core program, which is really about building a new school or renovating a, a current school. The submission deadline for the core program is April 11th. Districts should submit, are required to, are asked to submit one statement of interest or SOI per school, but, and you can submit more than one, but you have to select a priority SOI. The submission of the SOI-
Shooting yourself in the foot.
When it happens, requires the votes of the municipal governing body and the school committee, so.
City council and us.
The city council and you. So tonight, at the least, I'm here to inform you about this whole process and have a discussion about, you know, what, what your wish is in terms of going forward, and, and do you wish that I submit a statement of interest, and if so, what would the statement of interest be for? So I wanted to give you a little more information. The invitation to the MSBA eligibility period, which is what happens after you submit your statement of interest, then they, they review them all, and then they invite certain districts into the eligibility period. And that's expected to be in the fall or winter of board meeting 2014. Now, the vote to invite, the vote to invite a district into the eligibility period initiates a 270-day period for the district to complete preliminary requirements. Districts that complete the requirements in the 270 days are eligible to receive an invitation to the feasibility study agreement. So, um, what I need to do, what I, as I say, I've done the Whitebrook Statement of Interest, the SOI, for the last three years. This fall went again, we didn't hear anything from them until they said that all the statement of interests were closed and they had made their decisions. I called Brian McLaughlin, who is the project director, I believe, is capital project manager, and asked him, you know, about our statement of interest. He told me that in 2012, there were 280 submissions, and 16 invitations were extended. In 2013, he told me there were 201 submissions, he didn't obviously have the invitations at that point in time, and I, I didn't have a chance to look that up on the website. So I, I believe the discussion that we need to have tonight is, you know, whether the school committee wants me to submit an SOI, and do you want me to submit it again for Whitebrook Middle School? I think the, the chances of us being brought in for the middle school seem to be not very good, considering-
Window to pass an override. I mean, the, the timing works.
Right, the only problem is, okay, right, I understand. In the next two years, meaning the next two years from approval.
Right.
Right, thank you.
I think they just don't want-
Thank you.
-a, a district to start a process that they intend to finish, you know, there's, they have a very strict time clock on everything to move things along and keep them on track. Yeah, so people don't, yeah.
So Karen, I'm happy to amend the, the motion to include a repair track, am I using the right words? A repair track, right?
Yep.
Uh, SOI.
I, I, I think because the motion has been set-
Right, I can't amend it.
Yeah. And, and your motion was to make a motion for renovation of a new elementary school, the SOI with priority to support the district's core program.
Core program of elementary education.
Right.
So it was renovation or new, right?
Uh, renovation or new elementary school with a priority-
Support the core program.
Rather than the repair track.
Rather than repair track.
But we could have, and after that's finished, that motion, we could have another motion about submitting an SOI for Whitebrook.
Did he stipulate Maple as the priority? That's fine.
So we could do a second motion to have that as well?
We can do a second motion entirely, because I'm fully in support of doing an SOI for Whitebrook.
Because we can submit one, we just need to pick a priority.
Right.
Correct?
But to be clear, the Whitebrook, it sounds like Whitebrook couldn't be a request for a, a total renovation or rebuild, it would have to, Whitebrook would once again be relegated to repair.
Repair.
But at least it would be something.
May I suggest, I don't know if this works, but you could make a motion to ask me to investigate the possibility of doing an SOI for a repair program for, with the MSBA repair program for Whitebrook.
So moved, but we already have a motion on the floor, correct?
It's been seconded, we need a vote.
The first motion, Peter's, that's been seconded, let's vote. All in favor?
Are we voting?
Aye. For Peter's first motion to submit an SOI for an elementary-
I don't know that I was ready to vote yet, Deb, because this just took a left turn a second ago, and I'm, can we have more discussion before we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. I, I don't want to vote to support that unless I know that attached to it is an SOI, is steadfast an SOI for-
It doesn't have to be attached to it, you could do it, you could, if you chose to.
I'm saying, I'm not voting to support that without something for Whitebrook being thrown in, so I'm trying to get clarification as to whether or not that's-
But you don't have to throw it in.
Back to where we were at the beginning, that I would like more information.
My point is that would inform my vote this time.
Okay, okay, well, then we still have the issue of the fact that there's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, and I guess we can't leave it hanging there, so I guess we need to vote on that regardless of where we want to follow up with further motions. Okay, we'll follow up with further motions as needed, but we'll address that motion.
And, and folks who either believe that you can abstain if you don't think you have enough information, and you can vote no if you don't think you have enough information.
Okay.
I think the one thing we can't do is not vote and, and continue other, other matters. I think we have to either pass it or-
Or retract it and restate it? And if it doesn't pass, Barbara, I hope that you won't tell the world that we're not in support of the idea, it's just a matter of getting more information. Right, right, thank you, okay. Okay, so once again, a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. Okay. So we were three, so motion failed. Or did we?
I counted four votes.
Four of us?
One, two, three, four. I got four yeses.
Okay, so it passed.
I abstained.
It passed.
Yeah. I don't have a full grasp, really.
Right, it's four.
It's four.
Lori, Deb, Wendy, and I voted for it.
Okay, so the motion passed. Very good, okay.
I move that we include an additional SOI on the repair track for Whitebrook Middle School.
Before, oh. Discussion?
We can discuss all we want now.
You can?
I was just going to say-
Yeah, second is, and then we're away from discussion.
I have a couple concerns, and you, maybe just be the newbie in me, but one is the amount of time invested in putting forth applications. And I think we need, I, I'm, maybe there's not much time, I don't know, I've never submitted an SOI.
It's, it's a time-consuming process.
But I think about that, and I, and the term, and the word priority comes to mind, and that we have, as a district, submitted on behalf of Whitebrook for three consecutive years and not been close in the running. That does not mean that I don't believe to my core that our middle school needs attention, but I'm wondering what our likelihood is. It's, you know, it's putting, it's trying to put our best foot forward in the place that we have the most favorable chances.
You think maybe we'd have less of a chance with the elementary school if we also submitted for Whitebrook?
That's my question, it's just out for discussion, and the time that it goes into to submitting, because really, at the elementary level, we're submitting, we're submitting a core program for the elementary level, we're really talking about three schools, prioritizing one, but three elementary schools with a priority of one. So you're really talking about four schools if you're throwing in the middle school, which I'm not out of hand opposed to, but I, I would like a little bit of conversation, at least around, one, the time commitment it takes to put into that, and two, does that impact our, our chances at all? I mean, I think we kind of just throw everything at the wall and see what sticks, or do we say, here's, here's our priority, and here's where we really want to put our energy investment into.
Well, I would have to agree with, with all of you who are concerned about not having enough information, because as I said, I came to this meeting thinking that it was going to be one or the other-
Yeah.
-that we were going to talk about, so now there's a new piece here, and I really would, I, I thank you, Wendy, you know, for those considerations, and I certainly, as the one who's going to have to do this, would like to investigate further, you know, whether it's, it's possible, feasible, and, you know, what, I, I would like to get more information before I submit it that way.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Would the, the work that you had done in the previous submissions for Whitebrook, would any of that be useful in this phase, if we were?
Yes, definitely.
It says in their letter that it automatically, they'll automatically load that information.
Right, I'm going back to your question, that I thought was important about the amount of work that's involved, and on the plus side of this motion is that a great deal of work has been done. There may be new work and clarification, but a great deal of work has been done there. There was probably even some work that they don't have, but that we could go back and recover for the elementary school project, because there was considerable discussion about that at, at one point in the recent past, and we could use some of that information. So I'm not trying to say that this isn't going to be hard work for you, but as I think about endorsing the idea, I imagine that there will be some resources there that will help.
Absolutely, and, and of course, you know, I'm willing to do whatever you, as a committee, ask me to do. You, you asked about the amount of work involved, so I'm just giving you information. But again, as I say, I, I would like to be able to talk to Brian McLaughlin and ask him the questions that we have tonight, you know, before we make a decision to submit an SOI for Whitebrook. Doesn't mean that we can't do it, we could vote on that at the next meeting.
Could I suggest that we vote, since it's, we already have to vote on it, could we vote on it and with the understanding that it is possible, and if it is not possible, then it has to be retracted? With, because from the language you read, it sounds like it is.
I think we have a lot more questions than that. I, I would like to wait, and I would like Nancy to pursue it and get questions from Mr. McLaughlin and come back to us, and then, you know, we could decide then. We have a lot of questions.
Should I retract then? It's already been seconded.
I don't think you can do that.
I think once it's seconded.
I think we need to, to vote and take into consideration the discussion.
I'm embarrassed.
And that's from there. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to submit an SOI for a repair project for Whitebrook Middle School, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Hey, I mean.
Okay, opposed? Abstain. Okay, motion fails. And our understanding is we'll continue to discuss this at the, at the next meeting, and Nancy will look into a lot of the issues that have been brought up, and we'll hear, talk about it. Thank you very much.
Now we get to the really exciting part of the meeting.
The calendar?
Let's see if we can figure out the calendar.
Okay. The calendar had been approved on our January 2nd meeting, but there's been one change that we need to review and approve, and the change that is being recommended is to change our November meeting date from the 11th to the 18th. The reason being is that the 11th is a holiday, so we need to, that is acceptable to everyone, we need to vote on that and approve that change.
Wait a, so, it's, it's moving it from the 11th to the 18th, that's what's already circled?
I move that we accept the proposed change of meeting on, to the school committee calendar, from changing the November 11th date to a meeting on November 18th.
Second.
Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Motion to approve the minutes for the November 12th regular session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the November 18th regular session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the January 2nd, 2014 special session.
Second.
All those in favor?
And now you got to do reading.
All right, bear with me, okay.